Good evening and welcome to the September 11th public hearing for the recall of the town treasurer. I declare the public hearing open. I did just want to go over a few rules and order of events that we have outlined for tonight. First one is that Julie will be given a fifteen minute opening statement. Public, then followed by that will be the public comment round. Due to the amount of people here, we want everybody to be heard, so each person may speak once for up to five minutes. And then if time allows, a secondary round of short remarks may be offered. Julie may respond to questions or comments after the public has spoken. Julie may choose to hold a thirty minute question-answer session after the public comment, and Julie will be able to finish with a closing statement whether or not a question-answer is heard. When speaking, we ask that you please state your full name before speaking, address all remarks through the board, be respectful, no interruptions, shouting, or personal attacks, and everyone will be given a fair chance to be heard. So now I open it for the opening statement. Julie, are you giving your opening statement to him? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Dolan. I am an attorney at the law firm of Petroselli, Martin &amp; Haddow. I represent Julie Giles. Is this not on? How about that now, is that better?
Yes.
Thank you. Let me start again. I am Scott Dolan. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Petroselli, Martin &amp; Haddow. I represent Julie Giles, and I'm gonna make some brief remarks, and then Julie will speak herself. Earlier today, I sent a letter to the Board of Selectmen outlining some legal analysis. And so that others can know what I wrote, I'm gonna read part, most of the letter out loud to you all. The beginning part of the letter was just an introduction explaining who I am, so I'll skip the first paragraph, but I'll, I'll go in and read what was thereafter sent. Please be advised, the recall election of Mrs. Giles that you voted to hold on November 19th is illegal. I urge you to either cancel it, or at the very least postpone it to November to get another legal opinion on its illegality. You may not recall, but you have now received conflicting legal advice from your current town attorney, Kristen Collins, and from your former town attorney, Ben McCall, related to the town's recall ordinance and the state recall statute. Back in April, both Chairman Connors and Town Clerk Dee Dee Tibbetts contacted Attorney McCall for legal advice regarding the first wave of recall petitions that ultimately were deemed untimely under the state statute. Chairman Connors, you emailed Attorney McCall directly and asked him whether the state statute controlled, when the ordinance is silent, on how long recall petitions may be circulated. As you recall, Attorney McCall told you and Clerk Tibbetts that the state statute's fourteen day deadline applied. In the same email exchange with Attorney McCall, he went on even further and gave you some really insightful legal advice that applies to the second wave of recall petitions too. In an email to Chairman Connors and Clerk Tibbetts on April 16th, here is what he wrote. This is Attorney McCall. "The recall of municipal elected officials is generally controlled by state statute, Title 30A Main Revised Statute, Section 2505." And he quoted from that statute saying, "Except as otherwise provided by municipality's ordinance or charter." End quote. And he also wrote on saying, "This means that Limerick's recall ordinance will control the method for conducting a recall of an elected official, but only to the extent that it speaks directly to the procedural issues addressed in the statute." Here, this Attorney McCall's going on, "Here, Limerick's ordinance is silent as to how long an initiator has to return their petitions with a sufficient number of signatures, or, I'm sorry, in order to require a recall election to be called." And he cites to Limerick Recall Ordinance, Section 3. "This means that state statute must act as a gap filler, thereby requiring all petitions to be returned," quote, he's quoting the statute, "within fourteen days of receipt of notice from the clerk that the petition forms are available." And the statute he cites there is 30- A Main Revised Statute, Section 2505, subsection 4. And I want to highlight that again, he said that when the ordinance is silent on a certain recall procedure, the state statute controls. And I provided with this a copy of the email exchange between Attorney McCall and Chairman Connors and Clerk Tibbetts. Now, four months later, the town has hired a different law firm and is now receiving conflicting advice from Attorney Kristen Collins, who is saying the exact opposite about the interplay between the state recall statute and the town recall ordinance. Your town clerk did an outstanding job asking exactly the right questions. On August 8th, she sent an email to the new town attorney asking this. "One more question if you don't mind. The reasons stated on the recall form states," and she quotes, "incompetent to perform the necessary duties of the office of treasurer." And she ends the quote. And she asked the question further, "Our ordinance is silent on this issue, so does this fall back into Title 30A, Section 2505-9?" And the statute she's citing to, that's the state's recall statute that says an elected official can only be recalled if and only if that official has been convicted of a crime. In response, Attorney Collins wrote, and I'm quoting from her email back to Clerk Tibbetts, Attorney Collins wrote, "The ordinance does not require any reason to recall. The statutes in references," sorry, the statute in references similarly don't require any reason to recall. There is another statute, Title 30-A Main Revised Statute, Section 2505, that provides for recall only in the event of criminal activity arising from the position. But that statute isn't referenced in the ordinance, so the reason cited in the petition is sufficient, and in fact, the petition didn't have cited any reason at all. Now, in my legal opinion, that statement by Attorney Collins is dead wrong. It is also dead wrong according to Attorney McCall's legal opinion. What your new attorney is saying is that where your ordinance is silent on the issue of whether the state recall statute applies, then the state recall statute must not apply. And that, that makes no sense. Your ordinance makes no reference whatsoever to the state recall statute. And bizarrely, your recall ordinance instead addresses Title 30-A MRS, Section 2602, which is the state statute on how to fill a vacancy in municipal office. Your recall ordinance says nothing about the substantive standard for recall of an elected official. Your ordinance also makes no reference to the state recall statute, this 30-A MRS 2505, meaning that it cannot take the place of the state statute without some express intent to do so. Your home rule authority in that matter is quite limited where state law has imposed its own standard. Consequently, the state recall statute applies in full force on matters that are not expressly addressed in your ordinance. Because your ordinance is silent on the standards or limits on calling for a recall election, the limit set in Title 30-A MRS 2505, subsection 9, controls. And that subsection states, "Limitation of recall. An elected official may be the subject of a recall petition under this section only if the official is convicted of a crime, the conduct of which occurred during the official's term of office, and the victim of which is the municipality." That is, because Mrs. Giles is an elected official and has not been convicted of any crime in connection with her elected position as treasurer, she cannot be recalled. It is against the law to hold a recall election against her. In summary, you have received erroneous legal advice from your current town attorney, Kristen Collins, that directly conflicts with the legal advice you received from your former town attorney, Ben McCall, back in April. And I also included a copy of the email exchanges between Clerk Tibbetts and Attorney Collins. Next, "As you voted last month on August 18th to send an election on September 19th, I have thirty days from that vote to file a lawsuit against you under Rule 80B of the main rules of civil procedure. Unless you vote tonight to do something different, I will have no choice but to file that lawsuit next week to appeal your decision. I am confident that Ms. Giles will prevail in the lawsuit. And I don't expect you all to trust, I don't expect you all to trust me in all this, as I represent Ms. Giles and not you. But I do expect that what I have said has raised some alarm bells. I encourage you to seek further legal opinion on this matter. Postpone the election until November to buy yourselves some time to get another legal opinion. Slow down this process and do your due diligence as stewards of the public interest of the people of Limerick before we lock our, we find ourselves locked in a lawsuit." Now, there's a lot, lot to read out loud, so I know it's a lot to digest, and I appreciate you all bearing with me for going through that all. I'll answer some questions now if you have them, or if you prefer, Mrs. Giles can speak for herself, next.
We'll have Julie. Just no question and answers right now. I'm sure at the end, if Julie wants to do the question-and-answer session, they can be answered then.
Thank you. And furthermore, I did give a copy of this letter to a town clerk to be part of the official record in this matter, so if it does go to appeal, we can bring that record to the court.
Thank you.
Number one, I guess I need something to stand on, because I'm so short I can't even read my notes. But, good evening, everybody. This meeting hearing, I never would have dreamed would be occurring, but here we all are. Maybe it's about time that the taxpayers of Limerick hear the truth of what is happening within their municipality and with their tax money. It has been stated that I do not have the proper knowledge to do the position of which I have been elected, but that statement is inaccurate in contact. The path that fits, it wasn't any, friends voted on the budget on 3/24 to a fund, excuse me, allowed to be budgeted on 3/24 to allow any cross-changing of the position of the newly-elected treasurer. The training should have covered how the outgoing treasurer had done her books. Each town treasurer has their own precise way of doing the process and also a chart of accounts. The town of Limerick has 1,041 account numbers that I have to deal with off and on during the week. That's a lot to remember and to get right when your descriptions are only within one word. Needless to say, I was told code. I was not given authority and training to show what the town had done with their money and was making it, and it was no, your outgoing treasurer was at no fault at all. And she had her own way of doing it, and I thank God that she worked with me for a while. The town has had several federal projects in process when I came, was elected, and the paper trail for these funds that the town had voted on to help cover these projects were not well documented. Only three of, then, there was only three elections concerning it. There wasn't an SOP for either project. Even when asked to backtrack with the chief of the fire department, it wasn't possible. So I didn't have an accurate account on the amount of the funds that the voters had allocated or the selectmen had moved to cover the expenses in addition to the $1.9 million that came from the federal government. And as you all are aware, some of this money goes back as far as '21 and '22. At the towns, and the town's own auditor stated that the books were not accurate on the back of far as 2021. So how is someone that has just started in March of '24 supposed to know something that happens back that far before even elected? As MMA states, "A new treasurer coming is entitled to a full audit." I asked, I did request this several times of the selectmen, but each time I was refused. Your own auditor personally called me before I took out my papers and warned me about the mess that I was walking into in. I thank Mr. Smith very much. I had the pleasure of knowing him, and he wished me luck, and I told him I was looking forward to working him. That's when the books were a mess and strangely hard to follow. You all had, the town was given a signed-off audit, but your audits you receive are not a full audit. They are a government audit. It doesn't show you where the problems are unless you have a full audit like they're doing now. This conversation was again brought up at a selectman's meeting, which I can state because of Ron's calling me personally. All of the board was there. Ron Smith was there, his primary auditor Karen, and I. And I believe someone else, but I will not say the name because I can't guarantee it as much. I don't remember. I continued their point from there to ask for a, an audit for a couple of months, but it always fell on deaf ears. Maybe if it had been done as requested, the town wouldn't still be waiting for the complete audit over eight months later. And a lot of that has to do with your sale of property, that the town owned property, and getting their accounts right. But I'm only guessing to that fact. There has been a number of questions brought up at selectman's meetings about the coding of the bills and payroll. Almost every question has been answered by the next meeting and was correct for the most part. Usually past practices or coding by the department had been done. If there was an error, it could be corrected there simply by a journal entry and only usually took a moment to correct. But this has never been stated at the next meeting. It's always been left that the treasurer was at fault and didn't do her job, but unfortunately, she had but never was given credit for it. One example of this was as simple as in the coding of a Parks and Recreation bill that was for the porta-potties. The figure was quoted to me as $500 that had been expended. The bill was $525, of which was divided between the months, each month that were paid, and it was right in the descriptions that had been given to them. This position has been put in the crosshairs on the public works timesheet as well. Once I followed how my predecessor had preceded it, this timesheet has both payroll and accrued and payables on it. How come my procedure was done the same way as my predecessor? Hers was right, but I'm challenged in public. And I stated why, and it was never stated to the public why. No one has any idea how hard it is to complete this job when you are continually being publicly humiliated and verbally accosted. This takes a toll, not only mentally, but also physically and emotionally. But at least all your town bills are paid, and when the employees also get paid and their benefits are enforced. I've been asked questions about their benefits. I still have not heard from the selectman on one meeting that we had on benefits. The apartment had told me, but I still do not have it in writing on how much vacation that individual gets. That's just a sample of what, how it goes. We do not have a personnel director. I have been at, working as, at it, and also has the town administrator's secretary. I have done personnel for many years in schools, but not as well as what you have because you have so many different categories, and your personnel policy seems to be changing at least once a month. The town is currently using and outsourcing for most of the payroll. We, the town still has to get the timesheets and make sure they're all advanced to the payroll company. And every update on a payroll's personnel has to also be given them, where we used to do it all in-house. Currently, a new policy has just been placed. The company has to generate two reports, and I have to get at least two signatures from selectmen that need to be signed before the payroll can be completed. We have a deadline. It's been extended now to follow the policy. When I came aboard, the payroll was paid on Wednesday, even though Personnel Manual said it was Thursday. Now we pay on Thursday. That's fine. But we still have guidelines to follow to get the stuff, money to the banks, and money moved around. Fortunately, one week, the policy, we had, my predecessor had paid on Wednesday. I released them, and they changed it to specifically follow the personnel policy from, for Thursday. At the time when I can complete the payroll, after having the two signatures, I generate all of the reports that go for the payroll, just like I did when I did all the payroll. I disperse all the check stubs. I also, the company does not do all the reporting, as I have just found out recently, and this office still has to do them. And then journal it, is posted to the Trio system. The reports that they do goes to Trio, but I still have the final say, final posting for the town. The town is paying $1,041.66 a month to this service. They are a pleasure to work with, but they have had issues in the timeframe they're getting the signatures with the selectmen and have been sent, as per what I was told by the company, notice to the selectmen that they need the authorization in a more timely fashion. At a selectman's meeting, it has been stated that the budget was entered improperly, and it didn't match what you folks call your green sheet. But once again, the selectmen were speaking out of line. Trio had added the initial budget, and then you had other elections to increase that budget, and those figures were accurate. But once again, here, the public was unaware that the budget they were seeing was accurate. That is what the town administrator has posted when I've given reports to the selectmen. That is not right. If nothing else, it shows that the departments are not working together. We all work for this town. I do not live here, but I work for the town. There has never been a statement made when the public, when I caught the posting of a pan-payment of a $4,000 bill and proceeded to get the money back for the town. The reason it was doubled, two purchase orders, two, two copies of the invoices, and the way that it works with Trio, there was no way to cross-reference. The only way I caught it was through the reports. Or when a vendor came to me and I found, they found an error in their books. The vendor and I worked together to get this corrected. My deputy was putting the bills, my current deputy at that time was putting in the bills and never said anything. I did not find this oversight until I did the bills again after that deputy had left. The town received a refund of $33,686.36 from CMP. Thanks to the young lady at CMP and my work together, we got the money back. Otherwise, it was just gonna sit on the books to who knows when. But the town did get the money. They worked directly with the heads of central main power to get the money back because we were a small town and we needed the benefit of those funds. There was an error that was not in our favor. RFU 57, the town had to pay over $278,000 for the '24-'25 due to the fact that this office was not given the proper figures, but the budget committee was, and therefore you had the funds. I worked closely with Colin Walz to get this taken care of. He was very helpful, and we, he made sure that your current budgets are right and the figures are ready for the next year. Hopefully, the residents of Limerick want the truth and don't want to settle for the same process that has been an inaccurate, inadequate since '21-'22. When some of the townspeople first approached me to run for this position, I was reluctant. When some of the townspeople first approached me to run for this position, I was reluctant, but I wanted to help these specific individuals because they were my friends. I never dreamed I would be put through much grief and harassment. One particular family in the town continues to put me down and tried to destroy my name throughout the local towns. But thank God, a friend stepped up and asked one of them directly why they were picking on me. That individual dropped their head and walked away. I thanked that person, my friend, for doing that. I am not disrespectful to those people. I speak to them and that's it. They don't want to speak to me, that's fine. I do my job professionally. That's how I was trained by the state of Maine and I'm very proud of the training. Some selectmen have raised their voices against me and all I am doing is my job that the state statute states in MMA. I have been condemned on Facebook by a selectman and other people who don't have any idea what this position entails. There is a manual in MMA that is in excess of 150 pages that covers most everything that this position along with working with the tax collector covers. They also have a code of ethics that is stronger than the Town of Limerick's code of ethics. And I am more than honored to follow it because it's how I was raised. There are also state statutes and federal regulations that have to, that is posted and have to follow. And they are always changing. It's why, that is why I need to be state certified. And with that state certification, which has to be renewed, and that means continued education in order to save money for the Town of Limerick on their insurance policy. That is good till 2027, the end of the term. But the worst harassment has occurred in the last couple of days. It has come from phone calls at work and from the town's emails. It is bad enough you threaten me. But please leave my animals alone. Sorry. They haven't done anything to any one of you. And they are innocent. How would each one of you like it if your family was accosted and threatened to be killed? Or your own self told to shoot your head off? I am not kidding. It has been turned over to the maintenance state police. In closing, I do not live in Limerick, but I work for all of you, the taxpayers of Limerick. I stated I wanted your books balanced when I ran. I still do and I'm working close with the auditors and you can, Karen will contest that, attest to that. And the holdup right now seems to be the sale of the tax acquired property, but we have given them everything we can. We have also had a federal audit for the fire barn. There is a federal audit for the water project. We did not, meaning you, the Town of Limerick, did not know you were going to be getting these audits. Therefore, if you look at your audit budget, your town budget for the auditor, it is greatly over expended. The town's budget that they had in originally to do just the town audit, I believe, has not been over expended. But there is money that's gone for the fire barn. There's money that's gone for the water district. The water district paid back that money, so that's a wash. They also paid for an asset report that the government requires. And they also included for cross-training, but that was never done and we have paid for it. Currently, there was a bill for $13,500 or close to that from the auditors to prepay for the next year. This town has never prepaid that bill before. Why are we doing that? You tax mayors might want to ask. That is not a common practice. I have never done it in any of the positions that I have held from county, state and federal jobs. I have given everything I can. I've worked on holidays and the selectmen can verify that because one even came in. It was either Christmas Eve or Christmas and told me I had to go home, but I stayed till I finished the project. I have no problems with that. January 25th, I broke my back. Was supposed to be out for at least four months and was only out a total of 29 days. I broke the number one disc. That's the biggest disc in the center of your back. I still have asked to have my workstation evaluated. To this date, it has not been done and it's in, I'm in constant pain, but I do my work. I'm not complaining, I just do my work. But the word on the street on this 29 days was that I was out for four months, but that was false and never corrected by anyone. Thank heavens for Laura May and Judy LaPage, who covered for me when I was injured. I was never far away. I was just a phone call away. I couldn't drive, but I could answer and had access to help them. During that 29 days, I also went through a heart procedure with the, and was in the hospital to help so maybe that I wouldn't fall like I did breaking my back. I am one whose word is, in a handshake, is as good as a signed contract. I am a workaholic. That is one thing I owe my parents, from whom many of the old residents here in Limerick and the mountain towns will remember. Robert, or as he was known as Bobby Thorne, the logger, and Marjorie Thorne, also of the Sebago Fly Shop. My handshake is my bond. I do not believe in a hand bump or just a nod of the head. Give the courtesy. I want to thank each and every resident of the Town of Limerick for their time and I hope you feel, feel see fit to allow this position and myself to continue, at least to get your job done, as I had promised when I was elected. Other than that, I thank you and I, you have my word. I will keep doing my job. I'm not playing games. Thank you.
All right, I will open it up to public comment. Judy?
And Judy LaPage, tax collector since 2000, whatever it was, don't matter. Anyways, in defense to Julie, again, I tried to help her when she, when she, when she first started, she got in hurt, this tax acquired property. I myself, not knowing how to do it, I don't, never processed tax acquired, but I thought at least I've worked somewhat in Trio when receiving on regular real estate. The way it was set up in the system, again, we have type setups and I'm not going to bore everybody with all this stuff, but you have an account number to where this money is going to. So you have your cost for attorneys or realtors or whatever. And what is owed interest from over past years, they got to try to figure all this out. The selectman appointed code officer, Stan Hackett, to be lacing on to the board of selectmen. I guess that's what you call the word. So anyways, between him and I, he would give me a spreadsheet of what he came up with numbers for what principal had been outstanding for the past, some of the, some of those tax acquired were tax acquired back in like 1960. We're still sending on those properties. So again, all these projects coming along, we needed money. Yes, the town did vote on the fire station, the water project, two major projects that cost a lot, hoping that we're going to get this grant money, which we did, just didn't come in quite quick enough. But the town did vote to go ahead. We could transfer the 800,000 or 600, whatever thousands it was left from the first building account for a new fire station back in the day. So they were allowed to transfer that into this new fire station project. They also voted that if we had to, we could borrow money to a certain extent. I don't know exactly the whole amounts, but anyways, we ended up, we had to borrow. We spent the money we transferred because they started building. From what I understand, I could be wrong, you can correct me, I'm an old lady, but we kept spending because the contractors, great balls, I believe, right? Said that they weren't going, once they started, they're going to keep going. I talked to Mr. Medici about it one time because my concern again was we're spending money we don't have yet. So anyways, boil it all down, these account numbers since then, I started doing the real, the tax acquired back in 24, not knowing what I'm doing, but trying to help, at least you're getting, because they were selling it, the checks are coming in, can't just leave them laying around. So you have to receive it. So the way it was set up, I did contact Laura, our previous treasurer, because she had dealt with tax acquired property. She told me how she had done it. Again, over the years, we, stuff that might have been tax acquired in 2012 was still in the Trio system. And it would, that way it would tell, I would like commit it every year to collect it, even though it's tax acquired, which I thought was hideous. But again, I could see her point because that way there, she'd have to dig back eight years trying to figure out what the principal would have been on that, on that tax bill for that property. And over time, because the interest keeps going. So some of this stuff was in our system. Well, in order to clear that out, it was in an account where the tax lien stuff was. So I had to go in there first and receive what was in Trio to clear out that account, which is the realtors, the property owners account. Any remaining money had to be phoned into this G account, general fund account, which I guess now it's, they got it set up for capital reserve or whatever. Again, that count number has been changed over this year and a half of this tax acquired property to different account numbers. I just dealt with it again this past week. He brings me in, again, he has a spreadsheet of what admin costs were, what the principal is, what the interest is, so on, legal fees. And he has it where it was supposed to come out of. Okay, so like again, the numbers have changed. Two days ago, I had another one I had to receive and they changed the general fund account to a different number. So I said, these count numbers are changing like crazy. I don't think any of you really know what accounts is going where. That's my opinion, because I don't, I don't even know and I'm receiving it. So to sit here and blame someone who just walked in the door, again, she didn't, she didn't herself come in and want to run for this position. Two people went out to her and asked her if she'd like to or if she would. That part I know is true because those two people came in with her nomination papers to be signed so she could run. So furthermore, again, working there as long as I have, things change. The programs change, your board of selectmen change. Back in the day, we had administrative associate, it started off as secretary and then give it the title of administrative associate. She was terrific. I mean, people in town just sit there and say, you know, instead of three selectmen back then, we had three, we have four selectmen. That's how good she was. She was right on top of everything. She worked alongside the treasurer. So she would have everything prepared to bring to the board of selectmen. Every meeting they had, she had the paperwork right there, the warrants, everything was there. And she was there, again, working with the rest of us. We all worked together because it's like a big ball. You know, I write receipt stuff for motor vehicles, whatever. But the account setup, the treasurer and I did together for where the money had to go to like Bureau Motor Vehicles, which is one general account. It comes in and out, doesn't stay in the town account. Then we have inland fisheries. That's a different general number because that's going in fisheries. So this is not an easy, just walk in anywhere job. Again, one of the, even myself, as tax collector, do motor vehicle stuff. I could walk into another town who also has Trio and do motor vehicles, but you think if I walked in there knowing, I don't know how this other tax collector doing motor vehicles, how she processed and put things where they're at. So she really didn't have any, she should have had someone there to help guide her along and there wasn't. So in her defense, again, I am resigning in November. I'm going to give my resignation. So you'll have time for someone who wants to run for the position to take papers out and when they get elected, whoever it is, in March, it's, there's no way I'm going to train because again, you're looking at the state, they have to go, get certified through the state, the state again tells you who can do a registration, who can't. Same with vital statistics or elections or anything. So I'm just, again, I am had it, I'm tired. And again, to sit here and criticize someone because they walked in and because they shook hands with someone and said that they want X amount of dollars for doing this job and then condemn her because she's not doing to your expectations is totally wrong because again, those books, the money was messed up before she even walked in the door. That's all I've got to say.
Hi, Gil Harris, resident and taxpayer. My question is, is actually to the, to the select board. This audit that is going on, will that be made available to the public when it is completed?
Yes. The, the typical yearly audit?
No, the, the special one that's for trying to find where all the beginning numbers should be.
There, I know of three audits that are going on and someone can hop in if needed. The fire department, the water district and the typical yearly audit. And once those are completed, if they're allowed to be shared, they will be shared.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about, at one point, the board was talking about, you know, so many balances needed to be moved. I think, I think the number, someone said, once there was over a million dollars, you just needed to be shuffled around and put into the right buckets. And there was going to be an audit to help us get to that point. And I'm just wondering, was that completed?
They're doing that as part of the general audit. That's what's taking so long.
Okay, so that is, that will be?
As of this, are we allowing question and answer, I guess? If you are.
Yeah.
As of last week, the auditors were up to 80-plus journal entries that they were correcting from 2024 to attempt to get the numbers in place.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have the?
It'll be public record when it's completed.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Cheryl? I think that's Cheryl's here. Yeah.
Cheryl Latchley, citizen. Julie covered pretty much what I had to say about the money. You can't do your job if you don't have the account numbers that you're supposed to be putting in and I feel that that was the department heads to give to her so she could get her job done. She's being called out for being incompetent to perform the necessary duties of the treasurer. Well, on the other side of the paper, I think the select board should be included in that. I, maybe other people don't have questions. I have a question on how three selectmen could take papers out. That question I don't have. But how could those three selectmen not recuse themselves from voting to recall her, to set the meeting, to set the election? If they were supposed to recuse themselves from this, there would have been two, two select- selectmen left, which is not a quorum, there would not be a recall, and we wouldn't be here now.
Is there any other public comment?
I don't know who to ask the questions to, but I'm kinda confused because the counsel for the treasurer has stated that unless a treasurer is convicted of a crime, it seems this is just a moot point, number one. Number two, the fact that our council seems to be far afield from the treasurer's council's opinion, that poses a different kind of question. But I had a couple of bullet points, and this thing is going in a whole different direction than I thought it might, but, so my, one of my questions was simply, has the treasurer performed the duties required under main law? And I believe the counsel for the treasurer said it was statute 30, chapter 2211. So I would think that this process would be distilled through that statute. And, but I, you know, I could be wrong, but it, I'm, I'm just here to try to make an opinion, if this goes further, which way to vote. That's all I'm trying to do. And another little bullet point for, for, for me as a voter, has a treasurer paid the bills and obligations on time? Has the treasurer given financial reports, and have they been accurate and shared properly? Has the treasurer handled downtown funds properly and legally? Has the treasurer cooperated with town officials? And has the treasurer acted in the best interest of the town and the community? That's the bullet points. I don't know who answers, I don't know what the deal is, but thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? John?
So let's, let's put all the opinion aside. Okay, let's, let's talk fact, okay? We elected a person who boasts 19 years as a treasurer. To answer one of the questions that was just asked, I believe it is main statute that the treasurer must provide detailed and accurate reports to the board of selectmen either on a regular basis or a monthly basis. That did not happen for months and months and months. And when we did get them, they were not accurate. Okay? Let's take another fact. This town for years has deposited their checks electronically. In the office of the treasurer, there was a scanning machine that when a big stack of checks come in, the treasurer would run them through, they instantly go in your bank, you get a scanned copy of the check, and you're allowed to actually keep the check. Put a band around it, put it in filing cabinet. That machine's currently in the bottom of a closet in the treasurer's office because a treasurer with 19 years' experience isn't capable of running the machine and didn't ask for help. Okay? Deposits are now done like they were done 20 years ago on long deposit slips. Bank statements, supposed to be reconciled monthly. For the first several months, we never saw one as a board. Never one. They eventually got done, but they weren't done on a regular basis. The treasurer was asked recently to enter into the books a prepaid expense. Her response to me was, how do you do that? Fact. I will need to get some help on that. Fact, that's what I was told. 19-year treasurer. There are vendors that were not getting paid and paid late, late fees. There were, statum, I've, I asked for all, recently for all correspondence from IRS, Main Revenue Service, Department of Taxation, I didn't receive any of them, but we did compile some. Here's a packet for anybody that wants to take, just a few, that shows interest, late fees and penalties, all since March of 2024. I don't ever remember seeing any of those before. Fact. I don't know how many people here get paid by the town. How many people have been double paid, paid twice? Raise your hand. Everybody on that table should be raising their hand, because we all got paid twice one month, every one of us. I have vendors that have gotten paid twice. We have vendors that haven't got paid, and there's late fees. Facts. Okay? Let's go to what's costing every one of you money. Okay? What's costing every one of you money? On October 3rd, 2024, that office through electronic transfer received the final $1.8 million for this building from the federal government. And we did use a bridge loan to get this building built, approved by the taxpayers, everybody knew it was going to be done, we had a bridge loan. The treasurer's responsibility would be to pay that money off. That money sat in our account till October 27th, when the board realized it wasn't paid off. Four hundred and some odd dollars worth of interest per day. Per day. Well, that money sat in our account making pennies. On the same day, the board realized that we had taken $400,000 on a tax anticipation note months before. It was October, taxes rolled in, money was in the account. The $400 tax anticipation note, still out there. Interest, every day, compounded every day. That's a fact. That's money out of your pockets. Just a few months ago, the treasurer on her own drew $400,000 on a tax anticipation note this year. The day it was done, we had over a million dollars in the bank. If you've got a million dollars in the bank, why do you gotta add $400,000 to it that you're paying interest on every day? I could be wrong, and if I am, I'll be corrected. I don't believe that's been paid off today. I think we still owe the $400,000. Interest, every day, on that money. The other stuff, I, I, there's other stuff that could be considered opinion, I'm not gonna get into that, because we don't need opinion. There's enough fact to show that unfortunately, this nice person is incompetent to do the job, and that is the basis of the recall. That this person is incompetent to do the job, and those facts that were stated that are costing every one of you your tax dollars. One more fact, this week, just this week, she was attempting to put together the 2025 tax commitment for the journal entry for Trio. I know nothing about Trio, I couldn't enter it if you paid me. She asked me to help her with the numbers. I could make details of what she had. I took them away, I said, I'll look at them and get back to you. Later that day, she sent every one of us an email with those calculations, pure financial fiction. None of the numbers added up. Had $2.6 million being taken from the unassigned account. Never voted for, again, items that a person with 19 years' experience should be able to handle.
Is there any other public comment? Yes.
Martha Hamilton-Smith, resident of the town for longer than anybody really knows, and, and former select person. And, and I, this whole thing breaks my heart, you know, because we went from a, a simple, I left in what, 2010, that's like a hundred years ago, in terms of handling money and new processes and everything, and somehow or other, I don't think we managed to keep up with the times. And this is causing where we are now. I don't, I do fault the treasurer, because she should have known right off that it was kind of over her head or something, and, and said, you know, I, I don't think I can do this unless you get a trained person in here with me. But obviously, she thought and tried her best, but her best was not good enough and is not good enough for us today. The kinds of overpayments and lack of payment and costing us untold thousands now in interest money, that's money we shouldn't have to spend. So my question is, if this goes through, and I do believe that we have a right as under home rule to do this sort of thing, if it's necessary and you can prove that it's necessary, what is your plan as a board? Even if you don't agree with this process here that's going on, but what if she does get voted out? What is your plan to pick up the slack? Because if it happens next week, people still need to be paid, your accounts still need to be managed. Do you have a plan for that? Not that you're supposed to tell us right now, I guess that would be not coming, but I'm just, I'm just hoping that you do have a plan, and if, if she stays in, in the office, then that's needing a plan as well, so that this sort of overpayment and lack of competency, somehow, you have, maybe you have to add some, I don't know what, but it certainly cannot continue the way it is. So I, I think you have a really difficult job, but I know that you're up to it, if you keep working on it and do work together. That's the only way it's gonna work for you guys, it's the only way that it's gonna work for the rest of us, because we want to have it run well. We don't want to be made fun of all over the county. It's not very pleasing for us. So I commend you for the work that you've done, and I hope that you will now see, and everybody will see, we need to get a town manager. We need to reduce our board to three, and we need to bring ourselves up into 2025 and 26 and not get stuck in old ideas and old thoughts and what we used to do and it used to work and all that stuff. It's a brand-new world. Let's get with it.
Martha, to answer your question, to my knowledge, there is no plan.
That's your personal knowledge? What about, you're a board member. Do, are you feel competent to answer that, or no? Whatever. It may be in your lap anyway, so you'll have to do something, but I do hope that you've at least thought about the outcome and what you will do if. Dean?
The first attempt of the recall was denied due to the advice of the town's attorney at the time, is that correct? And the person that was submitted that obviously accepted that decision, and I'm guessing everybody else did, lack of no further action is basically accepting it. Am I kinda good there? All right, the second petition, we have a new town attorney, and the opinion differed from the first attorney. Okay? But we seem to accept as a town or whomever that that opinion was correct, and we can move forward with this recall. Am I pretty accurate? You were, submitted the information, the petition forms, I'd say six weeks ago? Is that about right? Four weeks ago? Four. It's been at least four. Okay. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the attorney said today, earlier, that he sent you all a letter today. I find it disturbing that you presented this letter of disagreement on the 11th hour. There was plenty of time for those discussions to have been had with her own personal attorney, three weeks ago, two weeks ago? So you could have had some time to look at that and digest it, not be put on the spot on the night of this meeting. So I'll end it with, if we hire a town attorney for their opinion, most of the time, I'd say, we agree with them and we move forward. It isn't always of this magnitude, this isn't a, this isn't a happy day in Lemark here, but we, we take their opinion, you've interviewed them, you've gotten their credentials, and you've accepted their decisions in the past. To go against that tonight because somebody has a differing opinion, presented it to you at the last hour, I don't think is fair to anybody. Thank you.
Is there any other public, is there any other public comment?
How you doing? Walter Recker. I would just like to say that not all work relations work, and if the treasurer finds the work conditions so bad, why would she wanna stay? Maybe, why wouldn't she just resign and let the town move on? Because a lot of people wanna just move forward at no blame to either side, just looking to move forward as a town.
We're just gonna let everybody go first once. Is there any other public comment for those who have not spoken yet?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yep.
Just like to make a correction. John mentioned, kinda hurt me a little bit, when I get into office this year, you know, you hear the typical, this is wrong and that's wrong. Well, going into so many weeks, Brady was the liaison with the treasurer, and she wasn't, they weren't meeting. So I stepped in and asked if I could take his place, I, I spoke to him directly, and he agreed. Well, the first thing I did was I asked for the expense summary, and I took that along with the green sheet, I think most of you have probably seen if you read the town report, and I cross-referenced the numbers off that green And I took that along with the green sheet, I think most of you have probably seen if you read the town report, and I cross-referenced the numbers off that green sheet to the accounts. And I didn't see any difference. You know, it's, it's just a fact. You know, so I, and the other thing I, that kind of really bothers me, if any of you look on social media, they'll say that the board did this, the board did that. I had no part of this recall, none whatsoever. But I'm being included in that, and I want everybody to know that I just don't agree with it. And, but I just want to, I didn't have any part of it, and we'll leave it at that.
DeeDee.
It was, just said, why we stay in these positions? We do not work for you, we work for the town, that's it. Days up at this municipal building are unbearable. You see what's happening behind the scenes? Innocent people are getting blamed for things that really they just walked in blindsided. It's not right. We work for you guys. That's all I'm going to say. March, I'm out, I don't care, I'm doing the same thing the tax collector's doing, we've had enough. Anybody who wants to run for town clerk, tax collector nomination papers are available in December, and it's all yours in March. But to blame one person who was blindsided when she walked in for already having a budget that was so messed up, not just 2024, is wrong.
Good evening, my name is Brady Connors. It's no secret to anyone, I'm on the board, I work at the fire department, I have a couple different hats throughout town. Couple of things I just wanted to bring up personally from working at the fire department. I know a lot of my colleagues here started to see issues of pay, issues of PTO, the payroll system has changed, in the sense the payroll system has changed, the fire department has been handling their own payroll, and those situations have mostly gone away. I do have an email, I have eight emails here proving that time cards have gone missed with not being paid. And then also want to just put out there that there is some question on the wording of our recall ordinance. And what I found after about 1:00 PM today, when I received that letter via email, eight other towns have recall ordinances that are worded exactly the same, five of those recall ordinances say the same MRSA subsection. So that is all I have, thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Different hat now. Yes.
So not personal on either side. I get that attorneys work on deadlines, so getting something 11th hour from an attorney is not uncommon. But if you guys' attorneys in April said one thing, now you have a new attorney who's saying the exact opposite, wouldn't it be prudent to get a third opinion? I mean, if you've got two attorneys giving exact opposite, we're looking at getting the town into a lawsuit that's going to cost the town a lot of money. Because attorneys aren't cheap. If the town loses, not only are we paying for the town's attorneys, but then we're paying for Julie's attorneys as well. You know, does the town want to pay $100,000, $200,000 in attorney's fees plus any payout? Do they want to take that chance without getting a third attorney's opinion on whether it's legitimate or not? Especially after having two completely opposite opinions. Did I give you guys my name? No.
No.
My bad, Lori Harman.
Is there any other public comment for those who have not spoken?
As you probably all know, I'm Jody David, taxpayer in town. I've been reading about this online for a few weeks now, trying to figure out what's going on as a taxpayer, I don't want to lose money, just like the rest of you people out there. I'm a taxpayer. Is this an open meeting?
It is an, it is an open meeting, it's
That's what I thought.
Public discussion right now, yep.
So, long story short, I put up a post the other day, just out of curiosity, to find out other people's opinion on what's going on in the town and why it's, you know, because they're all worried about what it's costing us, just as I am. I don't want to pay any more taxes, I don't want her to lose her job, I don't want you guys to lose your job. But what I don't understand is why I would get private messages, and I can read them off of my phone, why that they're saying she has brain damage because she fell when she only heard, I heard her hip or her shoulder. That I think this is going a little too far, is my own opinion, and I think we should get a third attorney, because I think that we may find things that aren't quite right. And like I said, I don't know her, I don't know any of you guys in town, but I pay my taxes, just like everybody else does, and I don't think it's fair that we have to raise our taxes, and I hate to blame one person. I feel as though from the comments I got privately, that I feel as though it's more a personal thing than anything. And if anybody would like to read the comments, feel free, I would gladly show anybody.
Lisa.
Lisa LePage, I just want to clarify something. You're saying two different opinions from two different lawyers for the same thing, it was not. I'm the one that submitted the first recall, and I was two and a half weeks putting it in. That gave grounds for it to be denied. This last recall was put in on a timely manner. If you recall, a few years ago, we did a recall, and we had no issues, and it's the same way it went. So it's two different reasons, we don't need a third attorney, two different reasons. The first attorney denied my recall papers because I was two and a half weeks getting signatures in. The new recall papers were on time.
Is there any other public comment for those who haven't spoken? Steve?
Steve McLean. Want to start off by saying, as a member of the Budget Committee before Julie started, we had asked for an audit before the prior treasurer had got done, so we'd zero out everything. That never happened. The Budget Committee also asked to have money set aside so Laura May could train the incoming one, and I don't believe that happened. So with that, Brady, you were the liaison to the new treasurer for a long time, but, you know, you never talked to her. Okay, I had said, it's been on air several times at selectmen's meeting, and I said, well, maybe somebody else ought to do it, okay? So that happened. How many times have the selectmen gone into her office and yelling and everything else at her in the past year? I made a statement on TV about five selectmen trying to tell her five different things, and you guys thankfully decided that someone was going to be her liaison, so she didn't have five people pulling her in five different directions. And then on July 25th, somebody went in and really leveled a verbal attack on her. And where is our audit report? Okay? And I've said this time and time again, it's Limerick, you're guilty till you're proven innocent, but this, this audit report should have been done before she took over, okay? We could zero it, everything out. And how far back is the auditor going? Is it just 24? Are we back to 22, 23, 21? Where are we? That's a legitimate question for all the taxpayers, because yep, things are messed up right now, I'm sure they are. But with her, Judy, and
Do you want to answer to the question?
Yeah, how far back are they going?
Online, the audit reports are done to 2000, back as far as 2015, certified financial audits, all the way back to 2015, up to 2020, 23.
Okay.
Those are certified and done and over.
But are they going back right now over some of the prior ones?
They're done and over, they're online, reading them.
All right.
They're doing 2024.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm up here saying, you know, where's the evidence? We know there's, there's some problems, all right? But where is, where is the evidence out? And I know you've read some stuff off there, John, okay? But my other thing is, is why has these things have progressed since she's been here? Weren't they addressed by the liaison to the select board? That, that's, that's a gap. That's a gap that's, that's happened, we all, we all know what happened. All right, so.
Do you want to answer that question?
Yeah.
Here's your evidence, you want to take it? You want it?
Who was, yeah, but her, when she was here.
You just said, where's the evidence?
Okay, I'll take the evidence, yeah. But my point is, as this stuff is progressing, all right, we've had this every selectmen's meeting about things going on, you've called her in and, you know, going on and on, but up until Howard Burnham got to be the liaison, nobody was working on it, she was just left out in the cold.
Is there any other public comment from those who have not spoken before? No, I will end that, that was a 44-minute public comment session. Short remarks for a second round, if anybody would like to. Cheryl?
Everybody's putting the heat on Julie, Julie's done this, Julie's done that. But I know this is not a recall for the selectmen, but I think it's about time the town knew that there's a lot more going on with the select board than is that, it's all Julie, all Julie. John took a recall out on some, one of the select boards several years ago, and, you know, he didn't recuse himself, and there was no certified reason, but he didn't like him, he was doing what he was supposed to, so, yeah, we're gonna, then he took and he threatened his employer behind the lines, lost his job. The select board doesn't do what the select board does until they have somebody that they can just put the screws to, and then they do all this other stuff under current, and there's stacks and stacks of things that the board skirts around, they don't follow the ordinance, they don't follow the policies, because they don't go with what they want. And I'm tired of them picking on one person and saying, this is this, and while they're doing all this other stuff, they just, they don't have any ethics when it comes to recusing yourself, doing what's right, what's legal, they just carry on. And what they're doing to Julie is just, as I say, a cover-up for other things. Proof.
You, you, all you did was talk, you didn't give any proof. No fact, not one fact in your statement. I'm sorry, I'm, it's not, it's
You like your facts, you like your facts, you want your facts? When you recalled Heath Edgely several years ago, you approached his livelihood and threatened him to sue if they didn't let him go. They fired him.
When I re-
Fact.
Keith was recalled four or five years ago? How long ago was it?
Yeah, and this was right afterwards this happened. The snowplow contract, fact, that's still in the process. You tried to take someone's, the board undercover, tried to take someone's land away, fact, for a snowmobile, to keep a snowmobile trail open. You guys don't stick with what you want until you can find something. So I'm just saying, you guys-
All right, we're, we're here for a public hearing on the recall.
Okay, yes, that's it. So behind all of this, that's why Julie's on the hot seat. She does not deserve this.
It's what? Yeah, she should be, she should be challenging me on the facts.
All right, all right. Is anyone else who would like to speak?
The person being recalled.
DeeDee.
So speaking on the silent, this has been an ongoing problem since the very first recall back in 2021 from Mr. Edgely. I had concerns back then about our ordinance being so silent. I know you said other towns have the same MRSA, I'm sure they do, but are their ordinances silent? What happens is when someone is recalled and you have so many open holes in an ordinance, they can fight it. If they get recalled, they can fight it. Mr. Edgely, he was too late with a deadline for the court, that is why he lost. Again, here we go. It is another open thing on our ordinance, twice, twice this year. First it's the 14 days, now it's... So were you convicted of a crime? Did you do anything to break the law? And supposedly, when your ordinance is silent, it falls back on state statute. That is state law. That is why I've done what I've done. This is how we're here. Fact.
Cortland.
Six more minutes.
Yeah, there seems to be, to me, Cortland Alexander, the drama is overwhelming to me personally, but I think that, first off, the select board has the right to appoint an interim treasurer, I believe that is correct. I mean, there's an attorney here, and I'm sure he doesn't want to participate, but whatever. And, I mean, through distribution of workload and/or you would have to assign a temporary treasurer to take care of the payroll, pay bills, and deal with a warrant, that's the primary thing. So there is a solution, immediate solution. And then, thank you Martha for the way you put that out there, it was, I appreciated that. And the whole thing, it's not about a personality, I don't, I don't see it as a personality. I see if we're trying to measure if there's a dereliction of duty, and I get echoes from different people that this isn't working, this isn't working, this is working, and I hear from the treasurer that she's, or the treasurer's overwhelmed with work, and there seems to be an interim assistant at times, or whatever the deal is, and, you know, I just, it, it just seems that can't get a handle on it, but if this is, if, it's not personalities, it's, you know, are you accomplishing your job? I think that's what's being weighed here.
Is there any other public comment? Judy?
As an elected official, again, this recall ordinance that we have As an elected official, again, this recall ordinance that we have, like our zoning and these other ordinance that we've had in the past, you go to court and most of the time the judge laughs them out of court with the code officers and everything else. This recall ordinance, again, it doesn't say to what it is that you're doing that's so bad. So normally, again, so you have to go back to state. To me, it is open. It's just wide open. So if all of a sudden you get ticked off at me because I'm elected and you have, nobody wants to have us appointed like you keep trying to put on the ballot to get rid of this elected positions for us. I just, it just, it just infuriates me because again, okay, with this crap, with the, I've had issues with this new Trio Web. I have issues now trying to do rapid renewal. You can't get no help from the state. I've called Rapid Renewal. I've called Trio. No one is responding back to me. We also started issuing these pine tree plates in January. So they're all backed up trying to fix all that mess with Rapid Renewal because you can go online now and they give you your plate. Then they have to come to us to get the, because they have the plate, they haven't got the registration. Then we gotta go in and do it in the system. So again, people have been upset because they can't go online and renew their registration through Rapid Renewal. I don't know if it's all on me or if it's a combination of stuff. So guess what? Maybe that's the reason to call your tax collector because you're having trouble going online to renew your registration.
Is there any other public comment? Okay. Are, do you have a public comment right now or?
I was told to answer these questions.
We can do that in the Q and A session.
Pardon me.
Okay, yeah.
Again, I'm Scott Dolan, attorney from Petroselli Martin-Haddo. Ms. Giles, uh, there's some questions about the interplay between the ordinance, the town's recall ordinance and the state recall statute. Uh, this Lisa LaPage talked about how the situations were different, that her petition was too late. This, the situation I was trying to highlight was that your ordinance is silent on multiple points. It's silent on how long people have to return the papers. It's silent on the criteria for recalling a person. It is, I see you're shaking your, you're shaking your head.
It's not because I can read English.
Well, I can read it to you as well if you'd like. It says that you have to state a reason.
Correct.
That is not a criteria.
That was put in by our voters and our voters took enough, took enough credence in themselves.
I'm gonna continue talking during this.
Well, you told me, you said you wanted to interact. I mean, you just...
Oh, you, you, oh, come on up.
No, you, you started the interaction, not me. You commented to me. I didn't comment to you.
I was commenting to Ms. Lisa LaPage about what she said. I was clarifying a point.
No, you looked at me and said you're shaking your head.
Okay, okay.
So just for the facts, go ahead.
Your ordinance is silent on the criteria for recalling a person. It does not address the state statute, does not address the state statute, Title 31, Section 2505, subsection nine. It does not address that. And 2505 requires an express intent of an ordinance to strike down what the state statute says. Your statute doesn't do that. The state statute, which controls, the state decides how they, uh, allow for your home rule authority to work. The state statute says you cannot recall an elected official unless that elected official is convicted of a crime related to the job they are elected to perform, the victim of that crime is the municipality. That simply hasn't happened. The ordinance is silent on that. The point I was making is that the ordinance is silent on the 14 days. The ordinance is silent on the criteria. Because the ordinance is silent, the state statute controls. That was the point I was trying to make. Not that this is a 14-day issue. It's not a 14-day issue. It's about the deficiency in your, your town ordinance. Because your town ordinance is deficient, state statute controls. If you proceed with this, you will lose. I will file a lawsuit next week. It's going to happen. I encourage you to push the pause button. There's a lot of emotion tonight, a lot of accusations, a lot of finger pointing. Hit the pause button. Get a third opinion. Don't trust me. Get a third opinion. And the reason you only got my letter today, I was only hired last week. So I've scrambled to go through all these emails. I've scrambled to get up to speed. So I'm, I apologize as it came today. I wish I could have gotten to you yesterday or even the day before, but I was just hired. That said, I brought this to every attorney in my, my firm, which is a litigation firm. Everyone agrees the state statute controls here. Your current town attorney got it wrong. Your former town attorney got it right on. Ben McCall, who then worked for Jensen Baird, who was the town attorney, he said, excellent, excellent municipal law attorney. The only reason I think that he's not your attorney anymore is because his firm stopped doing municipal law. He changed firms. He went to Drummond Woods. If you stuck with Ben McCall, he's a great attorney. I've been in litigation against him before and he's, he's a really, really sharp guy. And he got it right here. Your current attorney got it wrong. Double-check this. Don't drag the townspeople through this. Don't drag them through this lawsuit. Don't spend senseless amounts of money. This is what this is all about, isn't it? It's all about the money, isn't it? That's what we're all talking about, the money. Stop wasting money and do it right.
Dean?
Dean LaPage, well, I will like to agree with you to stop wasting the money because it seems like we have wasted a lot of money this past year. Do we have an estimate dollar amount of what we've paid in fines and fees and et cetera, et cetera? Is it fair to say it's over $10,000?
Yes.
Okay. My point when I was wanting to come up here was when the town enacted and voted on this ordinance, I was a selectman at the time and I didn't agree with a recall ordinance. But I was outvoted, so whatever. It seems to me that any time an ordinance is placed before the voters, that it goes in front of our town attorney at the time to make sure that the, or even MMA, which their attorneys as well, to make sure the wording is legal. Am I sort of correct on this? So if the ordinance is wrong, then maybe the person or the firm that signed off on this to begin with should be sued for allowing us to have this ordinance. And you said you were hired last week and the letter was given today, okay? Lack of planning on her part does not constitute an emergency on their part. She had mentioned after a meeting a few, a few weeks ago when she went up to Mr. Medici and said, I've got a lawyer. So there was time for this conversation or this communication from her attorney to you before today.
Brad?
Hello, Brad Libby. I squarreled up and down. I wasn't gonna say a thing. I was gonna sit back and listen, but I, I can't help it. Whether Julie is recalled or not, to me, is a moot issue. The fact that the townspeople have come through with a recall petition, uh, I, I think, uh, needs to go through. Unfortunately, it sounds like we're gonna have lawyers spending a lot of our money in protracted conversations. But at the end of the day, were it I, uh, given the circumstances, I don't, I don't understand why she would even bother to want to be here, uh, other than a, I don't know, maybe just to make a, a point. But the point that I wish to make is that regardless of whether anybody thinks it's legal and the lawyers are gonna fight it out, I think that the townspeople, which is what this should be all about, uh, should have the right to, uh, make a decision on, on, on whether we have an elected person here. I mean, the townspeople voted for it and now it sounds like maybe the townspeople have changed their mind. But that's my opinion. We welcome yours.
Is there any other public comment? Any comment from the board? Yes.
Cheryl Condes, resident of Limerick. It really saddens me to see that this is happening. I think that this recall should be voided for now for the mere fact that I feel that the auditor's report that is working on this is not complete. And until it is completed and we can see where we stand, that's where we'll see who's at fault. I have seen this board, not everyone that's on this board, vote, for example, the fire, the new fire station. It's beautiful. That being said, we put the cot before the hoss all the time in this town. The money wasn't there. The money had to come from somewhere, so we started taking from here and there to pay. Same thing goes with a lot of the issues here in this town. And it, it's not right. You have to run the town and the board should be running the town like it's your own household. If you don't have the money, you don't, you don't spend it. Same goes with, oh, we all need laptops. Well, where are we getting that money from? Oh, we'll take it from here. I'm seeing myself at home watching these meetings. I wish I had that money, Trey, because I don't know where this money's coming from. There's a lot of examples that are going on that can be said about what happens with all this money in the town. But if the rec department comes in and asks for something and they have outspent their budget, then that's it. They don't get it. You don't go and find money someplace else to give it. If a department has overspent, they're done. They can't buy, do anything the rest of the year until the following year comes. Everything needs to be budgeted. And the way I see things being, cameras and lights and all of this, if we don't have it, we don't spend it. But I don't think that our treasurer should be recalled until the audit is done 100%. I don't think she should be recalled at all. I don't think it's right. And I don't think what you guys have decided to do is right. You're gonna cost us, the taxpayers, more money. And it's not, not right. We have enough in attorney fees. We've seen it over the years. We don't need more. That being said, that's how I feel.
Sean Carroll, citizen. I just want to say that, um, with all due respect to Mr. Dolan, when a lawyer gets up here in front of a lot of townspeople and hits the bully pulpit, starts threatening litigation, take us, go to court, I'll beat you. It scares the layperson who doesn't know better. If you're gonna win in court, go to court and win. My opinion is that Julie's a nice lady, but the townspeople are here because the books are a mess and it's failure to carry out the duties of the treasurer that are at issue here. If you fail to carry out your duties at a job, you get let go. If you're an elected official, you get recalled. The townspeople shouldn't even know who the treasurer is, but we do because the books are a mess. In my opinion, the recall stands and should go through and we should find a new way. I think Martha put it very well that at some point, the treasurer should have realized that she was over her head, things were going south, and she should have pivoted somehow, gotten help or stepped down. But here we are. The townspeople wish to speak. If there's a hole in the ordinance, that's a separate issue. What we're here to say is that the books are a mess and we need to have somebody else run them. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Can I hear a meeting? I'm seeing none. We will move on. Julie, this opportunity is to answer any questions, um, or comments that have been made after the public has spoken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try to do it in the order of who spoke. Regarding to John, the 1924 tan was not drawn on until I was instructed to do so by Mr. Medici. You can verify that with the bank. That was not stated. You stated that I went, I'm speaking. You can speak afterwards, sir. You stated that I withdrew the money. I'm the one that initiated the tan. My predecessor had not done it. I came in March. That tan really should have been in place sooner. This year and 20, for the 25, I also initiated the tan. I started it at the first day of the new budget year because I foresaw what was coming. Because the budget committee had, at the time, and myself, had both brought attention to the selectmen to stop spending. But both Stephanie and I were told, we were fine. We are fine, okay? You made the comment about the money when I drew the $400,000 for the tan this year. When the tan was drawn on, there was less than $700,000 and I had been instructed the prior year to draw on the tan when it was less than $600,000. Yes, there was over $1 million because that night, unbeknownst to me, when I did the deposit, the deposit brought the revenues up over $1 million, which you quoted. And I'd really like to know how you got the figure because only one other person in this town has accessibility to the budget, the figures in our accounts, and that's the chair. And he did not have the report at that time. You say we should pay it back right now, okay? We just got a good deposit in. The taxes are coming in. I just paid the school account right currently. And I know you made a statement, you folks made a statement at the town meet, uh, one of your selectmen's meeting and I was not there, I'm sorry, that you had plenty of money. Yes, you're showing, but I have not seen it from the auditors. He was pushed to get you a fund balance figure. I still, to this date, have not seen anything on the amount. As of this moment, uh, I punched this before I left earlier this afternoon. You have $950,000 in change in workable revenues. Where's the rest of the money? It's on paper. Yes, you have a fund, undesignedated fund balance, but if anybody knows the town, knows municipal government and the accounting, that basically is our money that is still coming. Yes, we have made a lot of money on selling tax-acquired properties, but that has already been expended. Otherwise, we'd have a lot more than this figure. Your rescue billing, I sat up and advised when I first got here to, with the bank, I spoke to the manager. It was supposed to be a high interest. I found out that Sunny LaPage had set it up that way. Yeah, yeah, a high interest was less than a one full percent. You're earning a lot more now. You went from earning approximately $120... You went from earning approximately $120 to a month, a month, to over $1,000 interest. I am very happy to do that for the town. As DeeDee stated, I work for the taxpayers, not the selectmen. I am an elected official and have to follow the state guidelines that state that I work for you folks. Any questions you have, you're welcome to my office. Several people that have spoke against me tonight have never stepped foot in my office. One party that spoke, I went to a meeting, and I gave them a copy of the financials. If you will notice tonight, I've not mentioned any names. That's not the way I am. I don't point fingers. When I know exactly who's doing what or where it's from, and when the auditor gives it to me, I know they've got some paperwork. I have not seen it. But you asked about the figures going back. Yes, they're looking back into '22 and '23 because I had to dig out reports on the expenses of this building and get them to the auditor. Expenses on the water project because it was needed for the federal grant. Certain individuals, people that I've never known, have come and asked questions. I'm not ashamed to answer. I'm giving you the information that I have. Your books for '25 are as accurate as I can give them to you. I have found two errors in the last two months that have got to be moved, and I have been talking every day just about to my liaison. My liaison gets her financial statements every week. He gets, there is available every day in my office where the finances stand, what we have and where it is, from the payroll to the opera funds to three grants that we have for cemetery upkeep, to what we currently owe on this fire barn. Right now, we owe 1.869 and change. That's what this town owes on the fire barn. And I am very honored to work for you here at the folks. Anything I've done, I've tried to do it the way it's stated and follow the rules. I know that John and I have a personal, and I'm mentioning the name right there, some reason I can't seem to please that man. I couldn't even, he couldn't even please me or I him when he did some personal work for me, but we worked through it, just like I hope we can work through this. And I would like to ask, and it's been come to my knowledge by a taxpayer, that the town has been afforded some figures that show that the fire barn is, I won't say the figure, immensely overspend it. I asked for a copy of it. That individual was afraid to give it to me because of retaliation. But I do know what she stated, what they stated for a figure, and I'd like to know because I asked to see it. The Budget Committee and I and other taxpayers have all thought that it was over expended because there isn't a proper trail of the money. It can't, isn't done. Martha, it breaks my heart, too. I spoke at the last meeting, and I left when DeeDee did, when she was right on spot of what this town was doing. And she was correct in following the laws. You have two outstanding elected officials within your town clerk and your tax collector. You have no more dedicated people than those two ladies are. We are friends. We're comrades, and that's what we're supposed to be. Within Maine Municipal, all groups work together. We work together to find out if there's problems. We work together when there is a problem. We work together when another, one of their agent is in trouble or has been charged of dealings. The Maine Municipal goes and helps. Our hands were tied when any questions came up during either one of these elections. We were told, I was told, I won't speak for DeeDee or Judy, I was told they couldn't help me because they work for the selectmen. But that's okay. I got it done. You say about the overcharges. Well, those coatings come from the department heads. There are specifically two departments. Within the last 30 days, I caught one before the check, the check was cut, but I didn't catch it till finally putting the check to go in the mail. I voided the check. I stated why it was doubled, and I also stated to the selectmen when that $4,000 one come up. But nobody gets told that. I'm not one to go hiding stuff. As I stated, I am a lady of my word, and I was asked, why am I doing this? Why don't I just run and hide? I came aboard to get this squared away. I made a promise, and I keep my word. And that's your answer, Mr. Ricker. I keep my word. I made a promise to the townspeople. Give me the chance to keep my word. That's all I'm asking. If I can't do it, I won't run. Don't plan on running for another term because if I haven't got DeeDee and Judy's help, and you've got to train somebody new, God help this town. You're going down. That's not a threat. I just have seen it in other towns and their problems. I swear to God, that is not a threat. But like you said, Arthur, I don't like to see what's in the town. It breaks my heart. I went up and I spoke that I don't want to see this town fighting. And as I stated, I am not a resident, but I work for the people, and I'm proud to do that. And I just want to get my job done. Dean, you made a comment on the papers, the ballot. Well, one other rule was broken that never came up, and I have proof of it, and it's never been brought up to this date. Signed documents for the recall were left unattended. Lisa had to be with it. It was left alone in public view, and I have a picture of it. I've never said anything to this day. I just, I didn't want to, but if it's going to be thrown up with my town attorney, you have a right to know, everybody does, that that is not legal. They have to be handed. DeeDee challenged John's paperwork because it was torn apart. There's no way to prove that somebody had his paperwork because those documents, he was in charge, and I'm not pointing fingers. Howard, as my liaison, it's been a pleasure working with him. And as far as reports, he's given an expense summary every week or sometimes twice a week. He has also given a financial statement showing what the money is. I do not give financial reports to the rest of the departments because they cannot, don't seem to understand when I show them out, as shown with the party charges that was challenged, and there it was in black and white, and that's not the first one. But I just want everybody to know that you couldn't ask for a more conscientious person than Howard Burnham. Lisa, I've answered your question by stating that one was left alone, and I'm sorry, I don't have my cell phone with me, but I'll gladly show that picture to anybody. Steve McLean asked the questions, that there was not much to talk, and yes, they were, I was attacked. I didn't bring out the reports because I was told they weren't accurate till we got the starting figures, and we had a gentleman ask about the starting figures. Your budget is in there accurately as per what the town elected. Your expenses are posted every day through Trio. I just don't pick the numbers and throw them in. They're done automatically. So there is no chance, other than the fact that I'm giving the wrong information to the department or the code that it is posted to. That's no biggie. That can be fixed in a day. That can be fixed at that moment because the department heads, like the transfer station, Joanne does a beautiful job. But that's where our double bill came, and I caught the codit, I voted a check, and I gave it back to her. If you don't believe me, you can ask. But she came, and she said she was sorry, and hey, crap happens. We're human. I'm sorry. I'm not God. And I don't want to be, but I thank God he's here. Cheryl, you made some good points. As I stated, I don't like to see the town fighting amongst themselves. That's not why I'm here. But neither am I, excuse my English, there's not an easy way to put it. I'm not a kiss ass, and I'm not a brown nose. I go by, try to go by the letter of the law, just like my other two elected officials. We are under a stronger code of ethics and laws than if you had appointed. They don't, they're there, but if you're appointed, my bosses would be the selectmen. If you're elected, my bosses are all of you and everybody in the town that's watching the TV and the news media that's watching. And I'm proud of that, if they see me. I've been asked by out-towners, how do you put up with it? And I says, I have to. That's my job. And he shook my hand. And this wasn't even a Limerick resident. I've said that before, but I thank that man, and I'll thank him again if I see him. He just walked up to me while I was pumping gas. I've got his name at home, and I thanked him because he watches it on TV. He says he likes the amusement sometimes. Well, I don't because not only are, somebody stated that don't like hearing about town, well, you folks, if this goes through and what every, the selectmen are stating, you are personally attacking me. I have bet my deputy, the checkbook is balanced to this day, right up to August. She is not here tonight. She's in Boston, and she may be losing her brother, but yet she does the work for me. I've been told I don't have a deputy. I do. She's part-time. She's extremely knowledgeable. She's honest, and my liaison knows who she is. But I don't like it when I hear, oh, Julie's got plenty of money in her budget. She doesn't have a deputy. Well, I have a deputy. At one time, I had two, but one, just because of personal reasons, left, and that was a great loss, but we're managing. But that party is still available. It's not a matter of that I'm overworked. It's a matter of I'm not given the proper information. I do my work. I'm in that office. You can count on me being here unless I have been hurt or something has happened at my house because I live alone. And as, I thank you, Sean, for bringing up about the audit. The books are accurate until the audit is done. That I know, and I have been in communication with even an auditor that used, an accountant that used to be with that firm that I had the pleasure of personally knowing and asked questions so that I know that I am doing something right. Yes, I asked John about the posting of the commitment. You don't have to throw the fact that I said about the years. This isn't about the years. This is about right now. I didn't know how you folks achieved your journal entry because prior, the assessors always made that journal entry. But fine, I'm doing it now. There was one figure that says it's on the balance, fund balance. Well, that figure isn't actually what the town issued as a carryforward. That figure is your difference between your expenses and your revenues, and that's what that, how that is all calculated. I was told the party that was helping me didn't know anything about Trio, and he came back with a presentation. Everything was backwards from what I had it. I went back, and I looked at my predecessors to see how she generated that figure, and it was just the way I did it because I looked at my documents, and that figure was right. But I went back to verify the fact that I was right, and I was pleased when I found it. It wasn't a matter of pointing fingers. I just was pleased that I found it. So now your school budget, your county taxes, and your money that you get for state revenue, tree growth, and I can't remember exactly right in front of me without having it, are all posted, but yet I'm told that it's wrong. Can't be that way. But it's not what the carryforward is. That figure means the difference between your revenues and your expenses, and that's the way it's been done before me and currently. There is a better way to do it, but right now, I was told, don't rock the boat. Do it the way you've been doing it. And so that's what I did. I agree with DeeDee that she said they've had enough. You don't have to work here every day and see the drama that goes on. You don't know where to duck or where it's coming from next. And I thank God that Howard is my liaison because it gives me a chance to say what I'm thinking or what I feel. Before, I was not afforded the opportunity. I asked about meeting, and several times, I was not afforded it. I tried to speak to my prior liaison and before the meetings, but I was not afforded the time, and I'm not finding fault. Brady, you were a busy young man. And as far as the time sheets go, sorry, that's why Vinnie, the fire chief, and I work so close, and everybody wants their time paid, and I don't blame them. One tenth of an hour, which, and you can't read the stamp, and neither can the fire chief, you guess. I don't always get all the time sheets, even today. Your second-in-command sent his time sheet in by himself. Vinnie did not have it. He said he'd get it when Jared got back from his vacation. I do what, you've got what the information is that you have. I can't remember all the employees. I do my best. It goes to even show one employee here in the fire department asked me about our direct deposit. He was only getting a certain amount going into his direct deposit, but yet he stood right there when he saw me set it up in the system. I forwarded it to the payroll company. Unfortunately, it didn't get checked in the drop box because it came in later, but I did not hear anything this week, so I'm presuming his tech was fight. If it's a big check, I've gone and cut a payroll and put it on the next warrant. I don't mess with people's payroll. I don't want mine messed with. I don't want anybody's messed with. And as far as the bills with any overcharges, I've worked with the state of Maine. They got reduced because I didn't know that I was supposed to be doing the reports. The payroll company was, I was told, was doing all of the reports to the state and federal, and they're not, so I'm doing them and work directly with them. I have no claims. We're calling the IRS, calling the state of Maine, or any federal or state agency because a lot of them are friends, and I'm very proud to have them as my friends. And it's been advantageous for your town that I don't try to burn bridges. This is the first time that my bridges are really here, not bridges. I'm stepping in a quagmire, and that's an awful way to put it, but it is a quagmire. And like my dad would say, you make a new path, you go and get it accomplished, and that's what I'm trying to do for this town, to protect the town so that you don't overspend. Twice, I've come close to asking for more money to remove from the tan for '25, but as long as we can stay over the $600,000, I don't do it. We were very close. It went down to $300,000, and by the grace of God, we had a significant deposit, just like we did the first time when it was quoted. I didn't need to draw the money. Well, when I drew the money, there, as I stated, there was less than, less than $700,000, but that night, a big, too big deposit. I had a big deposit from the state and the federal government along with the taxes, and that brought the budget. That night, at the selectmen's meeting, over $1 million, but before that, it was under Thank you for speaking, Jody. I appreciate it very much. I don't have brain damage, as far as I know. I was a klutz, I guess you want to say, but it was beyond my realm of aspects because the heart surgery hopefully has fixed it, and I didn't lose any time. because the heart surgery hopefully has fixed it, and I didn't lose any time. And Gloria, thank you for speaking up, it was a pleasure working with you, and I hope we get to do it again on the Budget Committee. I think I got the right person, I hope. Municipal lawyers aren't a dime a dozen. I reached out to more than a half a dozen lawyers. Every one of them said that I was completely within my realm, but they don't do municipal law anymore, and it was stated that I should have had plenty of time. Well, the town of Limerick didn't have much, plenty of time when the lawyer firm was losing Ben, when we were losing Ben, because they no longer knew municipal law. So you went to the firm that you had. That was in a matter of a couple of weeks, and Ben continued to finish the project that he was working with, with Stan. And so, it's not easy, there aren't many doing it, and three of them called, told me they couldn't do it because they'd had dealings with the town of Limerick, and it's processed specifically one selectman, and I'm not saying the firms, because it's nobody's business. That's another case of not pointing the fingers. But I guess that's about everything that everybody brought up. If it didn't answer all your questions, I am available for you, but I do not like to see this town fighting. I do not like to see this town waste money, that's why I have taken it upon myself to get your double payments back when others weren't doing it, didn't even notice it when they were getting their financial reports. But I saw it and I called, and then they got on board with me to get it back. And I worked with the state and told them the situation with the payroll, and they did away with the fines. The bank has worked with me. We do a direct payment now for the fire barn. They removed the penalty because a payment didn't make it to my desk. It was kept and it was filed, I don't know where it was, but when I called the manager, we looked at it, and he says, let's set up direct deposit, direct payment, and then it'll never happen. So at the end of every month, we're paying $12,000 and change to the bank, and so you don't have to have to worry about that, but I got your penalty erased. And I will continue to work if I find anything, if afforded the opportunity, to save the town money. I'm not out here to spend money. My mom told me you can only spend your money once. If you've got a money tree that you've got, I'd like to have a cutting of it because I know what it is to live on a tight budget, I know what it is to save money, and I'm trying to do my best within the guidelines of the state of Maine to save the town of Limerick money and make them proud to have, be part of Limerick and know exactly where you stand financially if you give me the opportunity. Thank you.
I'll make a brief clarification of one point of law, and then I want to close with some, some requests. I just want to clarify that your, your town recall ordinance is not illegal. Someone sort of said that, I suggested that as an illegal ordinance, it's not. It's not, it's a perfectly valid ordinance, it just doesn't do, doesn't allow you to do what you've done here. It doesn't give you the power to overturn or to bypass the state statute. So your, your town ordinance is, it gives instructions on what the town clerk's supposed to do. It gives some procedures, it's effective in that. It's an effective ordinance, but it doesn't allow you to trump state law without an express statement of intent to do so in the ordinance, your ordinance does not do that. That's point one. The second point is that, I've said it already, you can't do this under state law, and I encourage you, I implore you, to take another vote here tonight. Take another vote here tonight, pump the brakes, and get a third opinion, instead of going down this path recklessly and without some more consideration.
I'll just respond to that real quick. We are not allowed to vote in a public hearing. The select board is not allowed to vote, so.
You can close the public hearing, and then your meeting right now, you can vote then, you can.
Yeah, we can't.
I encourage you to do so.
We can't do that without notice. If there was going to be a public, if there's going to be a selectman meeting after the public hearing, we could do that, but we can't just come up with a public, a selectman meeting.
Understood.
Yep.
But I encourage you to do something.
Julie, would you like to? Julie, would you like to hold a closing statement?
I'd just like to state that it's been, it's a pleasure to work for you folks, and I hope you will see fit. I know that for some reason, certain members of this town are against me, and I have no idea, as I stated, I've never even spoke to them, but I know stuff that's happened, and I've kept it to myself. As far as voting, if I understand some of Limerick's laws, you could, you post that you're going to have an executive session. Well, you had an executive session with three of you before you took the papers out on me, right in, right out in the, in the building, and decided on it, there was three of you there. But also, isn't the next selectmen's meeting Monday night? Couldn't that be added to the agenda if you saw fit? The schedule doesn't go out till Friday, if I'm right, Alicia. And I just don't want to see this town fighting. I'm not fighting for me, I'm fighting for the town. And whether you believe that or not, any of you, I don't like doing this. I do not like personally being threatened with my life, but I'm still here because I made a promise to some taxpayers of this town. That's all I'll say, and thank you very much for your time.
All right, the time is 8:12, and it is the close of the public hearing. Have a good night, thank you.